All right, great. So we'll get going for the Planning Board meeting of September fourteenth. This meeting is being held by Zoom and pursuant to Governor Baker's March twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And Governor Healy's March twenty nine twenty twenty three revised order extending remote participation by members. In any meeting of a public body, this meeting of the Planning Board will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting. Can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to or join the meeting may do so by following the instructions on the agenda. No in-person attendance of members of public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, after notifying the Chair of the Public Body, any person may make a video or audio recording. Of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting. The Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting and not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Lastly, per Section two forty one one of the Town Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item requiring a vote. At a time before the board votes on that item, such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponent of an item is permitted to have. So in terms of the recording, I will just also note, in addition to the town recording this meeting, I see that Berkshire Ed Edge's recording Otter Pilot is also recording the meeting. Okay, so we should do a roll call attendance since we are remote. So Pedro Patano.
I'm here.
Jackie Kane.
Here.
Malcolm Fick.
Here.
Jonathan Henkin.
I'm still here.
Excellent. Brandy Nelson, I'm here also, and Jeremy Ega is at another meeting this evening. All right, so then in terms of our business this evening, we have a Form A for thirty five Silver Street. And Brian, if you hang on one minute, we will promote you to panelist. See if that worked. Looks like magic has happened. Brian, you should be able to unmute yourself now. Brian, you're still muted. Are you there?
Okay, now I'm here.
Excellent. Yes, so just for our record, if you wouldn't mind stating your name, and if you need me to share the plan, I have it up on screen. Otherwise, I believe you have the option to share as well.
Okay, my name is Brian Casala from DEK Associates, Lance Sivers. If you have the plan and you want to share it, that's just as easy for you to do as for me, that's fine. I don't care.
Okay, I will put it up. All right, can you all see that on the screen? All right, great.
Okay, so what we're presenting tonight is a an A and R proven every play plan. We're creating a two parcels. Both meet current zoning for the town of Great Barrington as far as frontage and area. And there's an existing home we've allowed to quite setbacks at every corner. So after the division, the home will still meet zoning setbacks. So the, if you'd like, so lot number one has three point one eight seven acres. And it has a two hundred and ninety eight point one four feet of frontage. And lot two has one point four nine acres with a hundred and twenty five feet of frontage.
Okay.
So how do you, how do you get a hundred and twenty five feet to comply with zoning? I think in that zone, that's all you. A hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
It's.
And that's the widest part of the lot, so it's not.
Yeah, the table. The table you've got there says minimum lot width one hundred and fifty feet.
So we're a hundred and fifty feet. You can, if you wanted to go down at the bottom. We have plenty of, we've got two hundred and twenty one feet down there. And the whole, it goes extends the whole width of the lot extends the whole back line. Yeah, but that's not frontage.
It's not calling for frontage, it's calling for width.
That's right.
Well, it's a minimum.
It's, it's width, he's right.
Yeah, it's wrong on the diagram. It says frontage one twenty five, which is right, but where's the?
There's a table over here.
Yeah. But I see the width measured out there.
Yeah, but that's gotta be at a building setback line.
Let's look at that definition real quick. Does anyone else have any questions? I was more curious about what's happening here with this ten foot. I know this is, you know, i- if it meets the setback or if it meets the zoning requirements, it's approval not required, but the, these little strips here tend to create challenges for property owners in real life. So I was just curious what the rationale is there.
I'm not sure what they're intending to, to do. I do believe they want to create a common area with the ponds, so both landowners will be able to access a pond. And easements are always a problem. So I think the thought was to give them actual fee ownership in the access to the back there. I think that's what the ideal was.
So I have the definition here.
Oh, you do? Okay, I was just going to it, yeah.
Yeah, it's the distance along the building setback line measured parallel to or concentric with the street.
Though it doesn't work. Okay, because we had Chris look at this, and he was fine with it when we spoke with him about it.
Well, if it doesn't match the zoning.
Yeah, but he helps.
Let's look at, let's look at the dimensional requirement. So this is the R two. And if we're just double checking, the R two in the zoning table is a minimum of one acre. With a minimum width of one hundred and fifty feet. And let's see, there's a footnote there. Yeah, the footnote pertains only to minimum lot area maybe reduced by fifty percent, but not not the
Width.
Width of the lot. So I don't know if you want to go back and, and recompute things and come back to us?
I guess so. I, I was under impression, this was, he spoke with Chris and he said this looked fine, so we will do it, but it is at the zoning setback of one hundred and fifty feet?
That's the definition in Section eleven of our code. If you go down to Section eleven and you look at the definition for lot widths.
So is that area all the way, you know, it behind the?
Here, Malcolm?
Is that all part of, yeah, is that all part of the lot too?
It is part of the lot.
But it's not a buildable area.
Right?
You can't, because you don't meet setbacks there.
Well, you have, I don't have it blown up enough for me. What do you have, sixty four feet?
You have sixty four feet.
You don't have thirty feet of rear setback.
Yeah, your thirty would get lost in here.
Yeah, but he, it could count towards width. So it's two hundred and twenty one feet wide there. He just has to measure it parallel to the.
Oh, so he's got setback on the other side of that little jog, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
So yeah, maybe if you add those two, it would work, yeah. Because it just has to be parallel, because that's to the street and within the setback.
For years, for years, we've required that if you don't have the frontage at the street, you have to provide it at the building setback line. And this can't do it.
Well, I mean, twenty five feet isn't much, so is there any way you can move your subdivision line?
Yeah, you can just swing, just swing that.
Yeah, we can swing that.
I mean, that's gonna be your easiest thing. Just give it another twenty five feet and then come back to us at our next meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. That was an old.
That's okay. Yeah, no, that's okay.
Brandy, before we leave, I think it's kind of intriguing to ask question. And I'll, I'll, I'll address it to John. And it's based on Malcolm's idea that on the other side of this little jog at the bottom of the lot, yeah, on that other side.
This side?
The other side, you would have thirty feet there of setback.
It doesn't matter, because you need forty feet to get there.
So it has to be contiguous within the setback.
Well, is that in the bylaw? That rear setback, that rear dimension there would have to be forty feet in order to even make that viable part of it.
Wait, 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 hold on here. I think we're, you're losing me, guys. So you guys want to use the rear building line as the width? Is that what?
He's got, just on that side alone, he's got two hundred and twenty one feet.
Doesn't matter, it's not a building setback line.
Right, but so if we, if we take this line here, which is the setback line, right, and run it all the way through.
Yeah, and then you take twenty feet off to two twenty, you have two hundred feet.
Now, it's not gonna work. And, and where, where they've got the lot at ten feet wide. It's got to be forty feet wide to be considered part of the lot. That is a viable building portion.
Oh, to get access back to it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen.
Okay, so, so this whole width would have to be available, and then we wouldn't have a conforming existing building.
Is this devil's advocate? Is that somewhere in the bylaw, or is that somebody's opinion? On that, is that written? What's the actual verbiage?
Well, I think we should stick with the fact that the zoning calls for a hundred and fifty feet and we only have a hundred and twenty five. Frontage.
You could, you could use.
It calls for width, and width is defined as a distance along the building setback line measured parallel to or concentric with the street line.
Okay.
Right. So if, if we're, the fifty foot setback is if that were a hundred and fifty feet, that would work, but it's not. Okay, so I understand, I see that. And so we will resubmit next month.
We have a second meeting, so you can resubmit for our next meeting if you'd like.
I'd like to do that, okay. We'll change that, and that, is that the only issue you see at this point? That's the, we meet that and we should be good then, right? We'll have, I'll cock that line out, so we have a hundred and fifty feet at the fifty foot setback line. We can maintain the one twenty five frontage and a hundred and fifty feet at the setback line.
However you want to do it, you're the surveyor, so we'll let you, we'll let you make it comply.
Okay.
Okay, and if you don't mind, just for, you know, just to make sure it's real clear, if you wanted just to mention that for us, that would simplify it.
Okay.
Super. Okay, Brian, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, that was interesting.
The vagaries of.
More interesting than most formulas.
I know, Ari and ours are normally sort of like no brainers, but that one was, we had to think about that one for a little bit. Thank you, Malcolm, for looking that definition up.
Picked it up.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Jonathan. Go team. Okay, so our next agenda item are the minutes of August twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Do we have a motion to approve as amended and amended?
Don't move.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Malcolm. Let's see, we will do roll call vote, Pedro.
Hi.
Malcolm.
Hi.
Jonathan.
Hi.
I will abstain since I was absent, although I did read them and it sounded like a fascinating meeting. All right.
All of Kim's meetings are fascinating.
Kim, Kim does a tremendous job at the minutes, as we are well aware of. Okay, next item on our agenda is master plan review. And I was in the process of trying to pull up the master plan summary. And so if you give me just a moment, I will do that. Does anyone have, while I'm pulling this up, since it's hard to share and pull the information? If anyone has anything they want to say as far as like opening comments about the, the discussion that was begun at the last meeting, I would welcome that.
Well, I just have some data that can fill some time.
Sure, thank you.
I just looked at Chris's progress update document of twelve pages, and I counted how many tasks, tasks people were named to, you know, for responsibility. Planning Board had forty two. Select Board had seventeen. Historic Commission, which I combined with the Historic District Committee, had fourteen. I know, but that's, that two, actually, Historic District Commission had two. And the Historic Commission, I don't know, anyway. Fourteen altogether with anything with history in its name. Select Board, I said seventeen. Ag Committee or Commission had eight. Energy had seven, and then it started to break down all over the place, so. But I thought it was interesting to see. Planning Board had forty two tasks and Select Board had seventeen.
Yeah. That would make sense, given the rule of the master plan living with the Select Board. Jackie, I was trying to find those minutes that you had shared.
outline?
Yeah.
I can send it out.
It was in the packet, wasn't it?
It was in the packet, the joint committee packet.
Yep, I got it now, thank you.
Starting on page eleven there.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Sorry about that, guys. Okay, let's see, so I will share screen again. So based on the discussion that you guys had last time, was, was a thought just to sort of review who has done what at this point in time, so that we can inform how we're outreach to boards and committees. So just, just in terms of framing this for members of public or for our minutes. So our, our master plan is ten years old. And Chris and this board and the Select Board, I know, have been, at least for the last couple of years, doing an annual review of the progress towards the master plan. We've been making a lot of progress and there's also been a lot of growth and change in the community. And so, given that the, the role of facilitating and maintaining the master plan lies with the Planning Board. Our discussions thus far have been around that it may be appropriate at this point in time to take stock of where we're at and begin some conversations in the community around where we want to go. And so I think Jackie, jump in. Jackie and I have been kind of working on a communications plan, but you know, if we take stock of where we're at now, I think that will inform kind of where we need to go with other boards and commissions that have tasks to move forward on. To engage in a conversation of, you know, hey, where are you at on these tasks? Are these on your radar? Are they still relevant? Do we need to set them aside? Or do you intend to begin to take some action on those? And then what are the new issues that you have become aware of that we should be thinking about as we consider moving forward with potentially an update to the master plan in the future? Time obviously not has been set on that yet, but I think we need to do this sort of taking stock exercise at this point in time. So is there any reaction to that?
Uh, yeah. I, I think that's, that's what we want to do, but there are eighty, I counted eighty action items
Yeah.
for which there's nothing to report, or there's no progress, or you haven't started.
Yeah.
And, and these fall into a bunch of different of the responsible parties that Jackie just went through.
Yeah.
I don't know that we can sit in any meeting and go through eighty items. But maybe we could then, as you suggested, ask each of the departments that were assigned these items. You know, what the status is. And I'll tell you what the status, from one of the departments, I can tell you the status right now that we've never even looked at it. The Historical Commission has never even looked at the list on the, on the master plan during any of the meetings that I've attended.
Okay.
And I would, that may be also be the case for some of the other committees as well.
That's a good point. So in terms of trying to develop a communication plan, I think that's one thing that Jackie and I were, were sort of trying to get our arms around is, you know, where do we start the conversation? So Malcolm, it sounds like your suggestion is to start the conversation with a, hey, did you know this is on your plate?
For a number of years.
And did you realize you've actually done stuff on it regarding it and accomplished those plans, or look, you're sitting there with a lot to do, or do you want to just move it off your plate because it doesn't seem relevant today?
Yes, and there are some of those things there, and I think that's I think the, the committees should look at that and say, this isn't something we're, we should be doing at this point.
So I don't have a digital version of this, but I imagine Chris does, and so, you know, in that case, it would be a relatively simple exercise to sort of like excerpt out the rows that relate to each board or committee. My, my thought, as subject to discussion with you guys, is that I thought we should kind of take an approach of divide and conquer as a board and like physically go to the meetings and sort of introduce this topic of we are taking stock of where we stand with implementation of the town's master plan. You play an important role in that X committee, X board. You know, here's what the master plan has as far as your to-do list. Can you please put this on your agenda, evaluate it, and get back to us? And, and then, you know, if we we have a bazillion committees and boards in this town, and so I thought if we kind of divvied them up, that would make the big task more manageable. The alternative would be to send a letter, but I've, I've written, written to other boards on occasion, and I don't find that that's quite as effective. I think that face-to-face interaction or even this kind of virtual interaction is going to be more effective in terms of getting a response.
And one of the ideas too, is you, if you look down the road, when we met with the Select Board, we were talking about community listening sessions, getting together with the community. All of this lines up with doing something like that, having those individual listening sessions. Once we've worked with the different town committees and boards and heard from them and identified what might be needed to be added to the master plan, like last time we were talking about this. Brandy was talking about the need to pay attention to sustainability and climate change, which needs to be amped up in the, you know, some of the updates for master plan. So this becomes an interesting opportunity to talk to town individually. Collaboratively, it's not like, see, you didn't do this, but it's really about what needs to be done and where are you and what do you think your priorities are going forward? And then doing that, and then that's with the town boards and committees. Then if we're modeling ourselves after what was done when the original master plan in twenty thirteen was written, there's outreach to different businesses and community organizations and nonprofits, which is not the same thing as what we're discussing now. But it's also another part of the outreach that we need to address. But I don't know how we would do that, but there are all sorts of models that we could look at. But we'd be getting all this work that we're just describing now. Getting information back from all these committees and realigning ourselves around what, what the tasks are that, as Chris described them. I think it's a really good exercise, and it sets us up for lots of conversations.
And I, I think timing wise, we're, we're talking about a long-term timeframe, so, you know, just recognizing other obligations and, and tasks we're undertaking as a board. I was thinking if we could be in a position to include in our report at town meeting where we stand progress-wise on implementation of the master plan, that would give us, you know, four or five months to get to all the the other boards and commissions and get their feedback and sort of consolidate the information that we've gathered from them and then use that as a springboard for a broader community conversation. And it feels a little slow to me, but just recognizing, you know, many of these boards and committees are made up of volunteers and they may not meet on a regular basis, and, you know, it may be difficult to to get engaged, and they may need a couple of meetings to go through things to get back to us. I, I think, I think we have to anticipate it's gonna take several months.
How do you guys all feel about that? Do you feel like it's like you're drowning in more work, or is this something I, is really about good governance, and we do need to do this since this is part of the brief of the Planning Board? But how does this, how do you all feel about it?
Jonathan, do you have an opinion? I'd value your input, given your longevity on the board.
And the three years you spent drafting, having to draft.
Exactly.
Uh, well, it sounds like a reasonable approach to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Was it, Jonathan, do you remember if something was done to take stock of the, the master plan that existed prior to the twenty thirteen plan? Or was it just like, don't even look at that older plan, we'll just get going on our new plan?
That was so old, I, I, I think I don't think we spent much, if any, time on it.
But Chris did, Chris has a document that looks at the old master plan and breaks it down in columns similar to this, going back to nineteen seventy seven.
Wow, okay.
No, there's a lot of deep history here, if you wanted to find it. It's amazing.
Okay. Okay. So, let's see, so just scrolling through this list here, so there is the Historical Commission. There, you'll take that one, thank you, Malcolm. Would you mind making notes of who may be interested in taking specifically, if we could capture that, that would be helpful. So, so we've got the Historic Commission and the Historic District Commission.
Yeah, I'll take them both.
You'll take both, thank you.
They're totally separate.
Yes, they are totally separate. Tree.
They kind of get mashed together in this document, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be happy to take the tree committee, although Pedro, I know you've got some connectivity to the current chair.
Yeah, I was actually in their meeting yesterday. I can take that if you'd like.
Okay, so Pedro would take the tree committee, the Agricultural Commission.
That's a big one.
Yeah.
I, I can tackle that one. Yeah, I'd be happy to tackle the Agricultural Commission. I won't literally tackle them, just engage with them.
There's a whole subset of energy conservation sustainability in there.
Uh huh, yeah. Uh, Conservation Commission?
Yeah, that's in there.
Okay, nobody's taken that one yet. Cultural Council?
I could take the conservation. I'm happy to go and talk to them.
Are you sure? You don't have business, you know, I don't want to like make business you might have before them difficult, no?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh, Cultural Council? Jackie, that sounds right up your alley.
I knew that you'd say that, but they're on here at least three times, I think, so I can do that for sure.
Parks Commission. I'd be happy to do that one. It's parallel to Lake Mansfield, so I've got a little connectivity there already. Uh, Council on Aging?
I think I'm probably qualified for that one.
Yeah, I think that sounds like.
Jonathan, you'll handle Council on Aging.
So who picked up Ag Agricultural Commission?
Brandy.
Brandy, okay.
Yes. And then there are, are items that pertain to town staff, so I think we want to just talk with Chris about those. But I could certainly help facilitate that. Select Board, I'll take the Select Board. Let's see. So we'll leave Town Staff to talk to Chris about. Does the Energy Committee still exist? Did it get reformed into something else?
It's down here many times.
I haven't heard of the energy committee in, since we did the solarized project.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Let's see, did I just make the screen disappear? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
Let's see if there's something here, let's look over.
I think now we have like a sustainable living community committee?
No, that was disbanded.
Oh, it was?
Yep.
Wow, they disbanded, did it turn into anything else?
Not that I'm aware of.
I would sign the energy committee things to the select board for them to determine who it.
Okay, so town doesn't list an energy committee anymore?
Yeah, I just searched it and nothing came up.
Okay, alright, energy committee.
What happened?
Yeah.
The economic development committee has also been disbanded.
Okay.
The formation of the economic development committee was one of the successes on the.
And then it just fizzled, I guess. Um, okay, so energy committee, um, economic development committee, those are two we've got to come back to. The rest of these look like town staff to me.
The DPW superintendent isn't isn't half of these, it looks like.
Yes, yes. I think I'll I'll try and have a conversation with Chris about how we want to handle um, engaging town staff on their items. Okay.
There's no design advisory committee tasks in there.
That's referenced, it's not given a task, they're just included under these areas where you are mentioned, but you are a leader or responsibility.
I do remember that.
That that appears to be all the committees, so we just have some orphan items for energy committee and for economic development committee. And then we've got town staff um, items. And uh, we'll have to talk to Chris about how those are being handled. Okay.
What what do you think? So the volunteers should call the board chair and find out when the next meeting is and say you want to be on the agenda to talk about the master plan?
Correct.
And maybe send the subset of tasks for that committee.
I will, I will ask Chris if he can share, um, like, I think this is an Excel spreadsheet. So I'll ask him if he can share that spreadsheet, and if he can share it, then um, there's a function where we can sort it by the column that is assigned to different entities, and then we could excerpt out all of those. Um, otherwise, we'll have to do a little bit more painstaking, kind of cut and paste so that we keep the the category identified. Or maybe we just keep the whole thing together and color code the ones, you know.
Oh, that'll be beautiful.
Yeah, but it's also means that the committee has to go through twelve pages.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the idea of um, trying to do it digitally would be so much better than cutting.
Yeah, if if you could get me an Excel spreadsheet, I could create something uh sorted by committee and then.
Okay, I'll ask Chris for that then.
Yeah.
You could do a walking tour, Malcolm.
That's on here.
Okay. Um, all right, good, thank you, everybody, that was way easier than I thought it was going to be.
Um, okay, I I'll I'll send a note off with the list of the names here that I have.
What about dealing with the planning board itself and its tasks? When do we start addressing that? I wanted to make it difficult again.
No, I don't think that's difficult. I think I had looked through our list and I was thinking we were doing pretty good getting through the lists of items that were assigned to the planning board. So I I have not done that, you know, um, in the last couple of weeks, but I I looked at it maybe two or three months ago and I was like, oh, planning board actually is making a lot of progress on a lot of.
So Jackie, you're going to take the planning board and talk to the chairman?
Yeah, I think it will, Brandy sounds like a plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you. No, because I'm seeing all sorts of things, like no progress since last report, I'm seeing that.
Yeah, we should just go over and make sure there's nothing new.
You guys want to do that? That's fine, let's go to the top then, and we'll work our way down.
We don't do that now. We have six months to do it.
We do, I mean, we could tackle it in small bits. I mean, why don't I get the the Excel spreadsheet, Malcolm? I'll copy you on my request to Chris, and then if you want to sort the planning board tasks, um, then we can focus on the ones that don't have progress and have that discussion, you know, is it relevant at this point?
Again, there's an a piece here, which is what's new and what should be done, or what could be, should be added on here.
Yeah.
And there's some, so that becomes an interesting proactive piece of this exercise.
Yes, yes. And maybe we want to come up with a template, so we're all singing out of the same songbook in terms of outreach to the um, to the other boards and committees. You know, wh- where have we been? Where are we going and and um, and what's new? You know, where where have we been with the tasks we've been assigned? Where are we going with the ones that are still outstanding? And and what is new that needs to be considered? Or what other um, issues have arisen that are not addressed that should be addressed?
Good, so we should, you were talking before, Brandy, about having an over, you know, kind of like a template letter that would go out. So that we're all speaking from the same, off the same sheets.
Yeah, exactly. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Just so we're coming back with the same information or the same type of content.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, does anyone feel like there, well, maybe we'll get the list and then I'll ask you all if you feel like you're overloaded. Um, because I want to be respectful of the fact that you're all volunteers.
We are?
No, we're paid.
Unpaid elected persons. Uh, what is, we have like a special designation according to the state.
Right, special municipal employees.
Yes, super special.
He doesn't get his free parking.
No, there's no free parking. Okay, anything else on master plan review for anyone right now? No?
No.
Okay. Um, Pedro, did you want to discuss I zones, location and purpose? Me, we were going to look at where I zones are and whether I zones continue to have relevancy, correct?
Well, I just want to give some context and the idea of why I brought this up, and then can we do that then? And just, I can give you um, some recommendations, I guess, that I've come up with after studying some stuff.
Sure. Would it be useful if I put the zoning map up?
Um, not immediately, but you could.
Okay, okay, no, whatever.
So anyway, this, my interest in the I zones came, um, I mean, it really started when we had the first proposal as at Van Duzenville for that marijuana uh, manufacturing facility. And then when we got the one down here next to the new affordable housing. I, you know, just uh, raised some questions for me as to whether or not some of these, I uh, some of the uses particularly that can go in into the I zone are compatible with what is surrounding them. Um, yeah, you know, another thing that I think is important to understand as a planning board about the the industrial zones and the town of Lee is dealing with this, is that without any oversight whatsoever, any industrial zone by its state law can accept hazardous wastes. There's, you know, there's regulations that they have to meet and licenses that a developer of hazardous waste facility would have to meet, but in any case, zoning couldn't override it, we can't make a bylaw to override, you know, that type of use. If it's labeled industrial, even if it's I two, it could, it could be um, hazardous waste facility. And it can also be a place for solid waste. Now, solid waste is a little more flexible, because uh, if there's not any project proposed for solid waste, then we can have some regulations in place that prohibit them. But in any case, we don't have those provisions in our bylaws. So as we stand today, a solid waste facility can be proposed and the state would override, you know, any desires that anybody uh, here would have. Just to, so you get a sense of what hazardous waste means, I mean, I copied the two definitions and I'll just quickly just read what it means. But to the state is a waste or combination of waste, which because of its quantity, concentration, or physical, chemical, infectious characteristics may cause or significantly contribute to an increase in mortality or an increase in serious irreversible incapacitating reversal. Incapacitating reversible illness or pose a substantial present or potential hazard to human health, safety and welfare. So you get the pictures. So we have these, you know, these islands in the middle of these residential zones that are, that could potentially, you know, fall victim to this. And in fact, when the Rising Mill was proposed as a dump, you know, before the new agreement came through, that was the idea. So GE um, in Lee, GE bought the site up where the dump is going to be, because they knew that they can dump there, and the state would allow it. And they were in fact going to buy the, the facility at Rising Mill. So anyway, I also went through the bylaw because there's some concern about jobs in eliminating the I zone would have this effect on jobs.
Can I just, before you get into jobs and I zone, can can I just comment? Because I want to make sure we're contextualizing this properly. So I think we have to be careful to just say that because it's an I zone, it could be a hazardous waste or solid waste facility, because there are many other regulations such as setbacks from water resources and rivers and and um, geologic conditions that all have to be evaluated and found compatible with the state and federal regulations that govern those types of facilities. So I I don't want anyone to leave thinking that just because it's an I zone is a potential site for hazardous waste facility. I think that's a little overreaching.
Well, it's in, it's in forty A, so if you want to read it.
It's in forty A, but there are other regulations that have to also be considered. It's not, it's not singular un- of and by itself.
Right, in going through the uses, I think that the the main concern here comes with the light manufacturing use. Because most of the uses that are allowed in the I and the I two are also allowed in other districts, some by special permits, some by right. The light manufacturing is also allowed by special permit, B two, B two X, B three. So there is potential to just instead of uh, creating a new zone for these areas, there is potential to just rename them into one of these zones, like a B two, that also allows housing, that's friendly to housing, the whole thing. The other thing about the I zones that don't make sense, which I think in the least, if nobody has an appetite to really dig into it, that doesn't make sense is the way that housing is regulated. As I mentioned before, single-family homes in the I zone are by special permit, but two-family homes are by right. Um, multi-families are not allowed in the I zone, they're allowed by special permit in the I two, but mixed uses are allowed by right. I think there's, I don't want to call it a conflict, there's just an inconsistency there with the way that the the bylaw is applied.
I would agree with that.
And so the last thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, after kind of looking at this and studying it, we basically have five locations where there's industrial uses that I can see, unless there's one that I'm missing. There's Rising Mill, well, six locations if you count the Houstonic Mills, the HVC area. There's the area where the gas company is on Van Duzenville, there's the Van Duzenville um, large track that's on the west side of Houstonic. There's also a track further up the road, uh, just past Division. No, that's the Van Duzenville site, there's a track on forty-one that's west of Houstonic. That is all industrial, which is yeah.
Would it be helpful for me to share a screen in this instance, just because it's hard to visualize that?
Yeah.
So hold on here, let me do that. So if we're starting at Houstonic, uh, let me know when you can see that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we can see it.
Right, okay, so I zones where the um,
The mills are.
Where the mills are, yeah. And down the east side of the river, so Berkshire Mountain Bakery, right? And then continuing down the east side of the river to Rising Mill.
Rising Mill and the other side.
Solar field, right?
Right.
And then this is the industrial park, right?
Right.
With the gravel pit and um, the the solar and lanus bu- building, so this is for miles, right?
Right.
This is Berkshire Gas, and what else is back there? There's a mine back there.
Ameri- Ameriga.
AmeriGas.
AmeriGas, yeah, that's.
Okay, so those are all eyes in use, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then there's this one on forty-one. And that's now in a APR, right?
Most of it, yeah. Not all of it, but I think most of it.
Okay, and then if we continue down into town, there's the I two.
Right.
Um, I can't remember what all the uses are there, is that where the granary is and?
At two shop and there's, you know, it's kind of where that little mall, little strip of shops is above the Cumbies.
Yeah.
Is that where Prairie Whale is, behind Prairie Whale?
Behind the Cumberland Farms.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where Gilmore is and
Right.
It's Gas House Lane up there.
Is Hull included in that, Jibby Hull?
I think so.
Part a part of that maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's an inset here. Sorry, guys. Yeah, I I think you're right, it is a split lot, right? So um, where does Hull start? Somewhere in here. Here's Rossiter Street, High Street, Cottage Street, so.
That's, I think, that three hundred feet thing, or two hundred feet. Yeah, that's, that's Gas House Lane, I think Hull's on the other side of it, so that's two hundred feet.
And then we've got Iredale's manufacturing facility.
Mm-hmm, and then South Main.
And then South Main, yeah, if I skip back over here. And this is all water quality protection overlay district, right?
Yeah.
What have we got for industrial uses down there? There's the cabinet maker, um.
There's a bunch of stuff, there's the sign shop.
Yeah, uh, is it National Grids facility down there as well?
Right.
The cannabis growing in Fasano's old place.
Yeah, that would be there.
Mm-hmm.
If it gets approved.
Whatever happened to that? Did that ever get approved?
Oh, and then there's this little I, let's see. That must be the sewer plant.
Yeah. Yeah, the sewage treatment plant. And affordable housing.
And and I think the affordable housing's in the B three, right?
Yeah.
Um, okay, well, so in that context, um, Pedro, did you want to look at trying to correct the inconsistency in the the housing? Or did you want to look at the uses that are currently in the I? Again, start table of uses to see if they can fit in one of our business district uses?
Well, I don't, you know, I, I'm just kind of throwing this out to you guys to see how you react to it. I went through the table of uses, there's really not a lot of incompatibility between the I and most of the the B uses, particularly the B, the B two, the B two and the I seem to kind of parallel each other.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think the inconsistency use with housing, I think, is something we should definitely discuss at the minimum. The idea of comparing it to the other uses is that it could easily just be in, you know, designated as of course, that comes with a whole other study that would need to be done, right? Because there's so many B two uses that also would.
There's a lot of B uses, can you see those use table regulations now? I've got those up on the screen, yeah.
I think it's a lot of work to go through it, but I'm happy to go through it.
I don't remember why we have all of them. Jonathan, do you have any insights there? B one, B two, B two A, B two, I know B two X, we just.
The B one seems to be, the B one to me seems to be like spot zoning, because it's up where the country carpets is. And it's there, and then it's on the other side of Rising.
Yeah, that's an old one, I had had the uh, thorns. Yeah, that's an old one. I had had the uh Thorns. Um.
No, that's the B two A. That's a different, that's a different.
Let me go back to them.
And if you talk to David Thorn Thorn about the B two A, he'll tell you again that it's like spot zoning there too. Because it's basically two lots. There's two lots on the B two A.
Right, right. And and most everything to the east of of seven is is state. Forest or something.
It belongs to to the wards, but yeah, it is might be in conservation.
All right, I I I mean, I. I think it's a relatively easy task to correct the I for the inconsistency around. Housing permissibility. It does, I agree with you. It seems silly that. Two family is allowed and single family is a special permit, so that seems kinda. Um, you know, actually uh inappropriate. Um.
Especially since they're all surrounded by basically single family neighborhoods.
Right, I I think a map amendment in terms of correcting the I zone. Um that's in the center of the screen right now where that's all in APR. I mean. You know, that why haven't the listed as I, it's in APR. Um.
Yeah. And that's gonna go away.
Yeah, just like, just clean that up and make that R two.
Yeah, and there's nothing but residences on that land, I think. I mean, there's um.
Chickens, a lot of chickens.
There's what's his name's lot that has some stone and stuff in it, um. You know, the guy that owns the tree station, I don't know what his name is, Dale's, Dale's lot. Yeah, he's got some, but that's part of his home, so. There's really nothing else there.
Yeah, I agree with you. The assessment of the B zones against the I zones, like I I would wanna make sure we did that. Homework before we um had a discussion around eliminating the I zone. O- only because I don't want us to create a bunch of nonconformities, right?
Well, yeah, and and we may be talking across purposes about fixing the housing in the I zone, because I think. What should be done is eliminating the housing by right altogether in the I zone. Um, I mean, if we're gonna have an I zone, the purpose of restricting housing in the I zone is so we don't have a situation where somebody buys a house. In the I zone and then complains later that the uh permitted industrial use is uh is uh is bothering them. Which we've already had with the airport.
Well, and and you know, the solar farm and the, you know, on Vendas and Philo Road.
Yeah, and and that's one of the, one of the problems with our I zones as they are, being so close to residential zones. There's no big I zone. It's just little I zones all over with residential zones. But if we're gonna continue to have I zones, then I think they should be uh. Uh there should be restricted housing in that in that zone. If we don't think there should be restricted housing in the zone, then let's not have I zones at all. Cause that seems to be the, that seems to be the biggest uh. The biggest thing is the dimensional requirements. That's that's the real big difference for housing.
So I I that's a good point you're raising, Malcolm. I guess I'd like to maybe. Uh we can certainly continue this discussion, but I think in in terms of decision making, I'd like to make sure we bring Chris into the discussion. He may have some insights into the history of how the I zones were created and whether or not there's, you know, additional information we should think about. In terms of either, you know, um removing the I zone or um or. Uh correcting the housing inconsistency in the I zone. You know, if we remove the I zone, then we don't have to worry about correcting the housing inconsistency, right? We'll just assign it a a new zone. Um.
You know, the, I think the another problem too is it's sort of conversant way of what Malcolm is saying that. If somebody bought a house in an I zone, they wouldn't like the noxious activity going on there. But if somebody buys a lot in the I zone and puts a noxious activity there, the people who are already living around it are not gonna like it. We've seen that over and over again, right? So this is the thing about it to think about. And then I don't disagree with your sentiment. I think it's it's right in a way, but. In the big picture, I think outlawing housing anywhere is problematic.
I don't know. I mean, I think that's debatable. Um. You know, I. I think it's debatable. It depends on 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 the adjacent uses. I I just, I've been to. Many and lived in several communities that didn't have any zoning and any use can be on any lot and. It's, you know, it's disruptive to have your auto body. Detailing and repair shop right next to your two family home, right next to your single family home, right next to your fast food restaurant. It. It does make the community feel very eclectic in a very disorganized way, not in like a fun and artsy way. Um. A a an example that's close by, if you guys wanna take a drive, um. The town that surrounds the city of Hudson is called the Town of Greenport. They have no zoning. And when you, I just invite you to drive around and make some observations.
But they have a lot of really good big box stores there.
They do. It's only Lowe's, it's the closest Lowe's.
Lowe's and Walmart, you name it, they've got it.
Yeah, so I mean. I don't know, you know, I don't wanna totally, I don't, I'm not saying we wanna throw out the zoning. I just, I think it's gonna be hard for us.
I don't know who brought that up. I'm I'm not saying to throw it out. You know, I'm I'm not a huge fan of zoning, but I understand its purpose.
Yeah.
Just, you know, in our town.
I just don't want housing everywhere.
We have, but we have very little developable land and we have plenty of spaces for all these other uses. And we have very little developable land left. And it occurs to me that some of these I zones are are developable spots, you know? So saying that you can't be able to do one use in 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 those areas to me is probably a little bit problematic, particularly if it's housing, which is so desperately needed. As we all know. You know, I mean, I I I have to, I have to argue with the the assumption, though, that more housing uh. Area is gonna create more housing. I mean, we have a shrinking population, but we have a housing crisis. Because the the uh the gap between wealth in the town is huge. And people who make a regular income can't afford a a a house here. So uh how, I mean, how does creating more housing uh land solve that? If uh, I mean, it just seems to me that we would just get more houses that people can't afford. We build more houses. It's not gonna solve the affordable housing problem.
It's a complicated issue for sure. Um.
It's not a local issue.
Uh it, you're absolutely right. So um so Pedro, thank you for sort of framing that up. Um. Let's, we'll carry this forward to the next agenda and in the meantime, maybe you and I can shoot an email over to Chris and just. Tell him we're looking for a little bit of um history, if he's got it, on the I zone and we're kind of thinking of. Sort of the two sides of the coin, you know, one is reassigning the uses in the I zone. Um, the other would be um. At least correcting the inconsistency in housing allowable ability. And I think that's a topic it sounds like we wanna discuss a little bit more, debate a little bit more. Um, and maybe definitely um amending the map if we make any text changes to remove that uh. The parcel on North Plain Road from the I zone. Make that R two.
Makes sense.
Sound good?
Yep.
I have an unrelated question.
Sure.
If this is the time to bring that up, because we're still talking about master plan. And I've never really heard anything said about sustainable Berkshire's exercise that was conducted. All the research and studying they did that was very similar to what was involved in the master plan. They worked. Um in twenty ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and posted their big. Magnum opus sun in twenty 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 fourteen and dovetails with the master plan. And they're concerned with the same issues. How did that intersect with the master plan? That we were doing and is it, they just did an update in twenty nineteen and I haven't seen anything since then. But why, they're trying to do all of this stuff? What what's the difference in their goals in doing? The Sustainable Berkshire's exercise?
Okay, I have to be honest, I don't know. Does anyone else have any insights?
Cause I know.
Yeah, no, except it was countywide. I mean, their scope was countywide where our master plan was uh was town.
Very.
Specific.
But they also looked at us and helped us with some of the data and whatever, but I'm just wondering if their. Their worldview dovetailed with our worldview of Great Barrington.
So that was the VRPC most recently updated twenty nineteen?
Correct. It's just funny that I'm, we didn't hear about it because I know Barbara, for example, Zoytland worked extensively with them when she was at. At um Berkshire grown on agricultural issues amongst everything else. They have a whole section on housing, et cetera.
I don't remember if they came and gave us a presentation. Does anyone recall if they did that in twenty nineteen? Um.
They did not. We had one at uh at a BRPC.
Like at a fifth Thursday meeting or something?
No, at a regular uh.
Okay. Okay.
Is this the one Berkshire's report? Is that what we're talking about?
No, it's BRPC.
I haven't, I mean, how could I not have heard of what you're talking about?
I I know.
Weird, that's exactly how I I like, just walking through this territory. They were there and they have a. Deck that shows what they were studying and it was countywide, but it also focused in South County and.
If you go on uh uh BRPC's webpage, they have a report you can download. It looks like it's a. More PowerPoint deck, though.
That's, that's just a summary.
That's the summary, okay.
Yeah, they had a.
What is it called? Sustainable.
Sustainable Berkshire's.
And it was published in twenty fourteen and they reviewed the status of it in twenty nineteen and what you're looking at is like the. PowerPoint presentation that they gave, the summary of where they are.
I don't see the report available.
Online, yeah, that's what I was just trying to find.
No, it is. It's really weird. It's in this um when you, I can't get, pull it up right this second, but.
Is it under resources?
Right column and everything is linkable and you can go deep dive into all these different sections on housing and agriculture, et cetera. It's very lengthy, many words.
Okay, no, maybe it's worth looking at. Um. I wonder if there's someone at BRPC who's sort of shepherding that, who could give us a synopsis?
We we do have the leader of the group here with us tonight. And you know what? I have no clue. Um, this is twenty nineteen, Sustainable Berkshire's, and I don't know that there's.
And it came out.
Funded it or what? I mean, it had to be funded by something.
Yeah.
Um.
Let's see if I can find that.
And it came out in twenty fourteen and all the research they were doing. Uh overlapped the rest, all the work that was being done in the master plan, time was.
Huh. Executive summary review report, oh.
I I can't get the link to work on any of those things.
I just got the executive summary link to work. So Sustainable Berkshire's Community Strategies for a Sustainable Future. And this is dated what? I don't know what the date is on this. It is data dense, though. This executive summary is fantastic. I will um link this and and email it to all of you, including Kim, so she can add it to the uh. Uh, to the minutes for today's meeting. Um, it is set up very similar to the format of our master plan where there are our goals that are established for a number of different. Categories, um land use, uh. Economy, infrastructure and services.
I mean, it's amazing that that happened and all that effort and we're not talking about it at all. I'm just curious.
No, it's a good question, Jackie. Um, what I suspect happened was like they put it together, they started to roll it out and then COVID and then like it just. You know, it got subsumed by other initiatives. Um, but it would be good to like take a look at it in terms of our taking stock of our master plan. And see where there might be some county support. Um, there's not really a county mechanism, but you know, maybe there's some data that is useful. Okay, all right, that's a good question. I will um, I will send you all this link.
I found it.
You did? You got the executive summary complete?
Programs, initiatives, community planning, Sustainable Berkshire's Regional Plan adopted.
All right, great. What else, Jackie? Anything or should we go on to housing opportunities discussion?
Plenty, that's plenty. Thanks.
All right, I'm just putting this link and sending it to me.
It's funded by a HUD grant in twenty ten. So.
A who grant?
If there's any more money. Uh, uh, US Housing and Urban Development. Uh, it's a sustainable communities planning grant. So um, yeah, I don't, I don't know. I I'll I'll find out if there's uh additional opportunities for funding for. Doing the work on this.
You you know, it would be interesting, um Malcolm, from my perspective, would be. Um, if there is a like a subcommittee or something that's focused on implementation, like, you know, it's great, we create a plan, but like. What are we doing to enact it? And some plans have like a periodic review that happens on a annual or biannual basis and. You know, i- is it still on their radar, VRPC's radar to implement or has it been set aside? Based on other initiatives?
Okay.
You know, based on the demands to, you know, resources of other initiatives. Okay. All right, um. Thank you for following up on that, Malcolm. Other item, housing opportunities, discussion, congregate living and cottage housing? Did this get discussed last time, Pedro?
No, no, as I mentioned, I I did produce the. Document that just has kind of a summary of what the building code does with congregate living. And I made a recommendation to the board that we wait for you to have further discussion.
Sure, did you wanna share anything on screen?
Good. Yeah, I could show this document if you want. I mean. Yeah, why not? Just put it up there, just.
You probably did email it, but I haven't teed it up for tonight. I apologize.
Not letting me go to, I have to go to a Dropbox. I don't have it in Dropbox. Or Google Drive. I have it on my Apple Drive. Maybe I can share a screen. Can I do that?
Yeah, you should, you should be able to.
Okay, let me open it up and I'll share a screen.
I may have to make you a co-host, so let me know if you. I'm gonna just make you a co-host.
You guys see that?
Yes.
Oh, he's cutting.
Alright. So anyway, this is what I handed out to everybody. So that.
Yep.
Yeah, I I thought it was, it would be helpful. To understand how the building code de- deals with this idea of congregate living. And by the way, I found also in forty eight. Which is the zoning act that it's got several uh locations in it. That make congregate living for elderly. A by right use anywhere. So I thought that was kind of interesting that, I mean, it's elderly and I get it, but it's, you know.
What is, how is elderly defined?
It's like assisted living.
But is there like an age with it or? So like fifty five and older, seventy five and older?
It just says.
Ninety five and older.
I've got it here. Give me a second. I had it. Highlighted and everything. Cause I thought, I just thought that was interesting.
See, I know you wanted to introduce this because we were talking about how to define this in our own code, right? And whether or not we had anything. We could build off of in terms of our own code.
All right, just for background, the, yeah, the reason why I think it's an important thing to address is because we've already got one. Congregate living situation happening in town that's that's functioning under a special permit as a hotel, as transient living.
Right.
And I know that there's another organization in town that's looking to do the same thing.
Right.
And it's all to provide, you know, for affordable housing and workforce housing. For people, like, I think the construct project is all affordable and I think the other project would be for workforce housing. But we've got no avenue for these organizations who are interested in doing it. To do to uh do the the project legally according to our zoning bylaw because there's nothing in there. So instead they're having to resort back to special permits that allow them to. Work uh to exist as a transient facility, meaning that they would have to then. work uh to exist as a transient facility, meaning that they would have to then you know, provide, for example, new leases on a monthly basis, that kind of thing. Um, it's also, you know, it's and then historically, you know, it's it's been a type of living that's just um not just in the United States, it's existed everywhere in the world. It's it's gotten a bad rap because of um, you know, the SRO question and the whole thing, but we have to take that into context that that was, you know, New York City and it was landowners just trying to make a ton of money on on the immigrant influx and without having to do any works or anything on their buildings and that these congregant facilities that are happening in our town and around our region are all done by organizations and not these type of types of, you know, develop nefarious. Yeah, if you want to call them that, sure. So anyway, the document that I produced just shows you that, you know, congregant living facilities are on par from a building code perspective, which means that the sort of regulations that governs the health, safety and welfare for congregant living facilities are similar to those of boarding houses, dormitories, group homes, guest homes, lodging houses. And then the R two, which is more, okay, so the R one is what I just described and the R one is more of more transient in nature, but the R two is permanent in nature, but it also lists congregant living facilities. So you can see there it says non-transient. So and and it, the building could deals with health, safety and welfare in the same way that it deals with apartment houses, boarding houses, convents, dormitories, fraternities, sororities, hotels, that sort of thing. Then the the next to it um definition I put in there just come from our zoning bylaw.
The lodging house.
Again, so I think it's, you know, for me anyway, it's always interesting to go back over these definitions because we talk about them all the time and and then, you know, two months later, I'm looking at the bylaw and I'm thinking, why do we have these again? It makes sense why we have them because all three of them are different things. But it gives you a sense of how they are different from each other, but they are also do not describe congregant living of a non-transient nature. Right? So making the point that again, we don't really have anything in our bylaw that addresses this type of of living arrangement.
Well, we do have group homes. Yeah, but where do, where do group homes fall in? Are they in the R two?
I don't know. Well, I don't know exactly what a group home is.
I want to just see. I've got the table of uses up. Um.
A group residence is the definition in our bylaw. It says a residence or group home established for the purpose of serving the living, educational training or rehabilitational needs of children or adults such as those with physical or mental handicaps, learning disabilities under the supervision of persons trained and licensed for such purposes. So it's very different, you know, than what what uh congregant living would be.
And I don't see that listed as a residential use.
It sounds like more it than it's more like a rehabilitation.
Well, like Stanton. The Stanton facility is a group home.
Yeah, there's two in my neighborhood um that are just they look like single family homes, but um there are uh persons that have um disabilities that live there and they're cared for by, as Pedro just described, licensed, trained staff.
Yeah, and it's not, and I I don't mean to misrepresent because the definition doesn't just say rehab, it does say uh living, educational, training or rehabilitation in need of children or adults.
What about just house sharing? Which we're getting everywhere now because of the the cost of housing.
What about house sharing?
Do we need to do anything with that?
I don't know.
I mean, that's why we addressed the like.
A little different, though, because then house sharing is a little different because it's a single family for the most part. And it's like taking in roommates.
Or four or five of them.
Right, where congregant living really is, it is of a facility, really, that provides either sleeping, uh well, that provides sleeping and either cooking.
More than sixteen, but most of the house shares are less than sixteen people.
Right, yeah.
It isn't that why we changed the single family to a single unit? dwellings so that we didn't, so that we did not hem people into a a you know, a blood or marriage relationship for sharing a living facility that gives people a little bit of flexibility in terms of who makes up their household unit. Right? Do you, so so just going back to Pedro's introduction of the congregate living, though, Pedro, what I'm hearing you say in this introduction is that given the presence of a a a a use that is currently occurring in the town under a special permit, we may want to assess whether or not it's appropriate to bring this definition into our code so that it can be a permitted use in certain circumstances thereby potentially reducing the permitting burden for modifications to the building or a- and potentially opening up that use in in other areas that meet certain characteristics.
Yeah, it's really not about modification to a building or anything like that. It's literally just to allow the use. Because as you mentioned, the special permits under which the current congregant living situation is functioning is of a hotel use, so they're technically required to renew leases on a monthly basis to keep the residents there transient. And you, you know, without that special permit, yeah, without that special permit, it's crazy assuming the levels. I mean, imagine if you were a tenant there and you have to, you know, renew your lease every thirty. I mean, there's there's no sort of security there, so.
And and can we do away with the sixteen occupant trigger? Well, I know it's a building code, but but could can that be reduced in our zoning or something?
Reduced or increased?
Well, it says with more than sixteen occupants. We may have congregate living with with fewer than sixteen occupants.
Oh, I see. Okay. Uh, not have a numeric value at all, but give it some other characteristics.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that's probably reasonable. How does everybody else feel? Jackie?
Sounds good to me.
Malcolm?
Um, uh, I am, I'm totally in favor of this, uh, but when I did a a a search uh of congregant living bylaws, what came up with was really a a bunch of problems. First of all, Edmonds in Alberta came up most of all, I don't know why. But uh then um. That's that's Canada. I know, I know. They who knew they had zoning. Uh, but uh, uh, the the other ones that came up on the first page of the Google search actually dealt with problems with congregant living where it's allowed um in by the bylaws. And you know, things like frat houses and things like that that created problems, so um, we we need, we need to keep an open mind in terms of what the potential uh risks are of having congregant living in our um residential zones to make sure that that doesn't, you know, it doesn't create a problem.
I agree with you. Yeah.
I think having neighbors, having a neighbor can create a problem. Uh, it it doesn't have to be a congregant neighbor either.
Okay, so we'll um we'll talk with Chris. We'll ask him to put this on um on the the list of zoning items we want to take up for the year and um Pedro, I know you've already shared the kind of the outline with Chris. Had you had any other conversation with him about potential language or? Okay, so we wouldn't need a definition and a line in the use table.
Yeah, like, you know, we haven't done any work on it. I mean, we were gonna talk about it the previous meeting, but since you weren't there and we postponed it. This is really the first time we've talked about it.
Okay, well, let's add it um again to the agenda on the twenty seventh and we um we can discuss it with with Chris and I think it's probably of interest to Jeremy as well, so it'd be helpful to have his perspective. But it sounds like we'd like to move in the direction of a thoughtfully crafted um um inclusion into our into our bylaw. All right, I have lost the agenda. Um cottage housing? I wasn't sure what that was on.
I don't know what that is either.
Did it carry over from last time? Okay, we'll skip over cottage housing.
Cottage housing is what's happening on Northline Road. Or not happening on Northline Road, but.
I hear ya, I hear ya.
That was intended to be cottage housing.
Right, right. I know, I know. Yeah, I'm not ready to discuss it, but I would like to talk to Pedro and Jonathan separately about tiny homes. Um, but we'll we'll save that for another day.
Because I still, you call it cottage, but I call it bungalow. You know, it's like whatever it is and just just drive around Ocean Park, California.
We'd love to. Would you like to sponsor us on?
I would like us all to go there and just kind of hang out and see how nice it feels.
Side visit.
Yeah, exactly. That sounds lovely. All right, um, board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns, Malcolm?
Uh, nothing. Report?
Jonathan?
Oh, I do have something.
Hold on, Malcolm.
Um, the uh, never mind. I will uh, the DRPC is having an annual meeting um in October and that's why I'm hesitating because I don't have my calendar.
You want to pull that up and we can come back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. Jonathan, anything for you?
Uh, well, the last meeting I I sent out uh, the research I've done on on affordability and the oh, like the land costs per dwelling unit that we're spending on Northline Road.
Yeah.
Versus what would happen if we just bought a regular lot and put a three family on there?
Yeah.
They're basically spending six times as much uh per unit as we would have to if we bought a median priced lot in Great Barrington and put a three family on it. Six times.
That is tremendous. Um I'm, I I don't know what we do about the concerns that we've had about density. You know, we we encouraged um the Affordable Housing Trust and and Habitat to increase the density and they did, and then the select board knocked it back. So.
That, you know, there there's another factor in there. I mean, we 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 recommended higher density and and the housing, um, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust was here, but they already had an agreement uh with the neighbors as far as the density.
Which we didn't know.
Which we weren't party to. And we're not, we're not party to any of this, actually. It's not a legal agreement. It it was the meet, it's what came out of some meetings with the local, with the neighbors. Well, it, you know, it's it was a political agreement. It was before they'd even looked at the property. There was no design. There was nothing. Well, it nevertheless, the residents thought they had an agreement with the town.
Yeah, we we know that that development is always going to have um a requirement to balance all the interests at hand and and I don't disagree with Jonathan that that the the need for housing is so tremendous in our community that we should be doing all we can to get the most density out. But I think we also have experienced the the um feeling of dissatisfaction that there are legal channels that are well outside of our board's control that come into play and stop projects and we get zero. And I think I I kind of resign myself, Jonathan, to the fact that twenty's better than zero. You know, and if if we could get twenty, that's better than zero. Would I rather see thirty or forty? Absolutely. But if it's not going to be able to be constructed or it's going to be tied up for years in court, I don't, I don't see the benefit to the community to like keep fighting that.
But part of the part of the purd is that they have to come to the planning board.
Mm-hmm, they do.
For approval.
Right.
At which they haven't done.
They haven't. You're right.
And what I was thinking is what we should do is take the plan that they have and say it's not a purd, it's a subdivision and create however many lots you have to have to do that and that would leave the rest of it potential future development. Either that or they should do away with one of the roads because to have three million dollars worth of road to serve twenty houses doesn't make any sense.
Mm-hmm, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, no, that's an interesting option. I mean, I appreciate that you're trying to come up with a solution and an alternative because I think that is is help, you know, more helpful than us just being annoyed that we're not seeing high density there.
I think the bigger, the bigger point, I think, that I take from what Jonathan is presenting is that we're all concerned about the affordability of housing. And we have an example here on on a project in which the town participated and because of, I don't know, its actions, let's just say, it has made the housing more expensive than it necessarily should have been. And I think that's an important point.
Getting the most value.
Yeah, that's an important point for not just this board to know, but for everybody involved to know.
If if the applica, I didn't see the application to the state, but if they said they were going to build twenty houses there, would we have gotten three point two million dollars from the state? I doubt it.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
That's crazy. Well, when it comes before us uh for a purd, then uh then we have an opportunity to comment further. And I saw somewhere that 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 Habitat is suing the engineers for something. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what.
I had heard that there have been some unexplained delays in preparing the plans, which is part of the reason we haven't seen the plans yet, Jonathan, and um you know, maybe there's been um some communication breakdown, but um I I hadn't heard that there were any lawsuits. I just heard that there were some delays in getting the the plans, so. Okay, all right. Well, certainly, um, you know, Chris will let us know when that's going to be coming before us and we can um be apprised of that and then be ready with good constructive comments. Anything else, Jonathan?
Nope.
Jackie?
Not at this point.
No, I just send everybody links to the actual report itself for Berkshire's sustainable, sustainable.
Thank you very much. Uh, Pedro, anything for you?
Yeah, I got three, three things for you. One is your response that just occurred to me to your comment about the I zones and hazardous waste dumps that can occur there. Um, you know, we keep in mind, there are some regulations, sure, that you have to. It's really licensing that you need. And if you consider the dump that we would have gotten in Rising Mill, it was on a waterway, in a floodplain, the whole thing. And the one that's proposed in Lee is the same thing. And it's adjacent, in fact, to tributaries that go into the Houstonic. So to say that it's not necessarily, you know, a possibility because of all the regulations involved, I think I don't want to call it a mischaracterization, but we have to consider it because these dumps are happening in places where we never thought they would happen. Um, my second comment is that I'm absolutely blown away and appalled by the, by not being invited any member of this board not being invited to the meeting that occurred in Town Hall with uh representatives from Boston to discuss affordable housing. I thought it was absolutely absurd. I don't know how it happened, but when I, I didn't even know about the meeting. And when I read about it, I was blown away that not one of us was invited to that meeting.
Malcolm, did you know about that meeting as a? Yeah, okay.
Exactly. My third thing has to do with the um cosmetologist that had on State Road, Brandy. You'd brought up the fact that the building that he's building is not the same building that we approved.
Oh, the dermatologist.
Yeah, and I'd like to see that guy come back. Uh, because they not, you know, to me, it's, as you guys know, having having a door to the street is super important on State Road.
Yeah, I can race out with Chris.
Completely turn their backs on State Road. It's awful.
Agreed. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything for. All right, thank you, I don't have anything for uh Lake Mansfield Improvement Task Force, um other than. We're hoping to see the improvements at the Lake Gota construction this fall, and I believe there was an announcement about a significant. Uh grant that the uh town received uh towards that project, so that was. Good news and congratulations to Chris, because he's very effective at. Um securing funds for the town for a lot of different projects, so. Uh Pedro, you have your hand raised?
Yes.
Or is that a high five?
No, 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 I forgot one thing, uh I was, I attended, I was invited to the tree committee last night. And I was there to basically explain to them our regs in the. In the bylaw with regards to Route Seven landscaping. And I made a, I let, I'm gonna say it's a promise that whenever we get a site plan review here, that's on Route Seven, that we would send. A note that we would send the approval, that we would send something to the tree committee, so that they have. They say I have a, you know, an idea that 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 it's happening, and that they, you know, part of, part of what uh the chair of the tree committee and I've been talking about is. Enforcement, right, and we're not gonna enforce the tree planting. This this board's not gonna do that. That should be the enforcement, the enforcement should come from the tree committee. And they're, you know, more than willing to take it up. They just need to, nobody knows, you know, the tree warden was on the, in the meeting yesterday, and he never knows, he never knows about any site plan that goes down, so. Just one thing, before you go on, I did receive information yesterday that. The Guido's planted some trees, finally.
I saw them last night.
Okay, I haven't seen them, I just wanted to mention that.
Yes.
So anyway, if we could do that, and if I'm ever absent for a site plan review, can we make sure that? That the tree committee gets a a note?
Uh yes, and and maybe we wanna think about formalizing that, I had reached out um. Uh to them by email a couple of weeks ago, and I hadn't heard anything, so I appreciate you going to the meeting, because I just haven't been able to squeeze it in. To my own schedule, so thank you. All right, um if there's nothing else from Board members, Malcolm?
The October fifth.
October fifth, yes.
Yeah, there's a BRPC annual meeting at the um. Uh at the Berkshire Hills Country Club, and Anne Gobi, the Director of Rural Affairs for the Massachusetts Office of Economic Development, is gonna be speak. And uh it's kind of a big deal to get her uh to have her speak, uh she'll speak to anybody, but uh. Apparently, uh she's been making a lot of uh uh trips to the uh Berkshires here, um. But uh um the event won't happen unless we get more people signed up. The deadline for signing up was Friday, September fifteenth, but it's been held open for another couple of weeks to see if we can uh. Uh get enough people.
Are you telling us to sign up?
Yeah, I think it'd be, it, well, first of all, it's a, it's a good dinner for twenty five bucks. And if we can get uh get it come out of our budget, then that's even a better dinner. And uh um it's a uh, it's a, it's a, it's a good meeting where you get to meet people and uh um. Again, there will also be an award for the CUSAC Award, which is done every year for the. Uh the planning award.
Okay.
So it's four to six on the fifth, um. I can send a link to you guys.
That would be great.
Yep.
Malcolm, could you tell me her name again?
Anne Gobi, uh A A N N E G O B I.
Thank you.
What is she talking about, Malcolm?
Uh world affairs. She's, she's the Director of Royal Affairs for the Office of Economic Development, and I think she's gonna be talking about what the uh. Um the admini- Haley Administration's uh goals and approaches are.
She's the, she is the the new position, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so this is, this is an important person for us, yeah.
We should definitely show up.
Did you say, could you come to the club?
No.
Do we get a table?
Uh if we're there first.
We have traditionally sort of like. Gotten there early and gotten a table, so starts at four. All right, great, thank you.
Yep.
We will all sign up.
Yeah, good.
All right.
Sending it now.
Super, thank you, okay, so if there are no more board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns, we will go to Citizen Speak. I see we've got at least, it looks like two human attendees as um. That are listed here, I don't consider the otter a human. Um James or Vivian, if either of you've got any uh Citizen Speak, just raise your hand and I will um unmute you. All right, um give it one more minute, see if anybody wants to speak, but if not. Give just a few more seconds. All right, seeing no hand raising, we will adjourn at seven thirty six, thank you, everybody.